This is City of Avondale Estates, Georgia, Board of Mayor and Commissioners, June 12th, 2024. This is our work session. It is now 5:37. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt. So is Lisa, do you have a second?
Second.
That was a lot of votes. Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Graham. All right. Guess the big item is item number three, update on US 278, well, actually, number four, updating 278 Complete Street Project.
Yeah, so as Mayor Poe Tim Shortell mentioned briefly in her opening comments, the construction period for the 278 Complete Street Project will begin on June the 20th. You may have already noticed that IP construction has begun placing materials that will be used during the construction period along the south side of 278. There are barrels from Twin Oaks heading toward Sam's Crossing for easy access to that area because that will be the area whereby the project begins. So the project will begin in earnest on the south side of 278 at Sam's Crossing, move down the south side of 278 to Ashton, essentially turn the corner or cross the street, if you will, to the north side and then get, then work its way back up to Sam's Crossing. We, we have an active project page with information related to the construction of the project that is available from our homepage. If you click on the projects button, then you can click on the Complete Street Project and it will provide you with all the information that we have to date. We plan on updating that, that webpage on a bi-weekly basis or as needed as information needs to be disseminated to the public. Like I mentioned earlier, we are hopeful whether and materials permitting to have that project completed in full in 18 months. However, you know, as we have experienced with other projects in the past, sometimes weather and materials are not cooperative. So, you know, at the most, this is going to be a two-year project, but we're hoping it's closer to the, to the 18th month window. We're very excited to get started. We've got a great team assembled to assist us with the project. IP Construction is a fantastic firm. We are ecstatic that they did on the project and, and were the winning bidder. Our consultant Bruce Pinkney is, is one of the best in the business. He's done large-scale road construction projects for his entire career and is advising us on how to phase the work appropriately, you know, provide, you know, a steady flow of ingress and egress from all streets that are accessible, from all streets and businesses that are accessible from, from 278. And we feel very confident that we've got good plans in place to mitigate any impact to ingress and egress into the CBD or onto South Avondale. Now, we do realize that traffic patterns for motorists will change. We, you know, are aware that, you know, there are some, you know, obvious alternate routes for folks to take that could impact traffic within the residential community, especially along Kensington and South Avondale. We will be introducing some traffic calming measures to the board soon in order to implement those to react to changing traffic patterns. However, we also believe that the construction will cause some folks who are using the City of Avondale Estates as a cut through to no longer use the City of Avondale Estates as a cut through. So as we move through construction, we, we anticipate seeing a reduction of motor vehicle traffic through the city for a means of, of passing through. So we're ready, we're ready to get started. Of course, this is a project that is 10 years in the making. Been a lot of staff hours, a lot of hours from our engineering firm that didn't necessarily anticipate this project lasting 10 years. A lot of support from various funding partners, initially with GDOT and SOTA, and most recently with ARC's generous additional grant of $2 million. We're very grateful that we have partners who believe in this project and want to see it be a success. And, you know, I think anytime you have a project with this level of funding and this length of time which impacts real life, we want to make sure that we are very mindful of, you know, the resources that are being put into place in order to mitigate all of the potential issues that occur as a result.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Ben?
I'm good.
Okay. Nothing?
No.
All right, wow.
We're ready to go. I'm, yep.
Definitely, yeah. So, all right. If we got no questions, we'll move on to the next item, item number four, the 2024 Draft Tax Digest.
Yes. Always the most fun time of the year for us, and.
Yeah.
So what I've done is I've prepared for you a three-sheet tax digest reference guide, those being the draft digest from 2023, the final digest from '23, and then the draft digest for '24. So just kind of as a primer, when we, when we build our budget for the coming year, we're doing so estimating what we believe the digest will grow by the following year because the monies that we received in the last quarter of the year are essentially used to replenish all of the cash that we expend for various purposes throughout the year. We've done a pretty good job at estimating what that's going to be. And I, I, that's why I wanted to take you through this three-phase discussion here. If you notice that when we issued the, the draft '23 digest, it anticipated a, a constant millage from the year prior, which would have been 9.8 mils. And with that 9.8 mil assessment, it was estimated that the amount of property tax revenue to be generated from the digest was 3.4 million. So knowing that number, 3.4 million, I want to reference really quickly our '23 adopted budget, which we adopted essentially five and a half months prior to receiving that digest. We had guessed or estimated our property taxes to be around 3.467 million, which would have also included a utility tax that the county collects and distributes to us, which we estimated to be 60,000. So we were, we were very, very close on our estimate, which was 3.4 million. Now I want to turn your attention back to the final digest from 2023. If you notice in this final digest, it took into account the board's decision to lower the millage rate to 9.55 mils. Based on that, that digest, the proposed amount to be collected in revenue with the reduced millage rate decreased to 3.32 million. So if y'all recall, after we got this final digest last year, we amended the, the '23 budget for the first time. And so we amended that '23 budget. Excuse, excuse me for a second. So we amended that, I mean, excuse me, we amended the '23 budget prior to doing that with the assumption that we were going to actually keep the 9.8 mils and have further tax digest growth because of the fact that the county won their appeal in Superior Court to revalue the Jade property. So we amended our budget upward to approximately 3.6 million dollars in property tax revenue collected. So I now want to turn your attention to an item that will be later on in this work session but is relevant to this discussion for this purpose. So if y'all will flip to the budget amendment material. You will notice, and these are based on our unofficial audited financials. You know, all of the, all of the work for the '23 audit has been completed. We will be receiving our draft audit documents within the coming week and have that finalized shortly thereafter. But what you'll notice is that two things happened. One, we did decrease the millage from 9.8 to 9.55, which decreased our, our anticipated property tax revenue generation after we amended the budget earlier in the year. So that was a reduction. Then you'll notice that we had a number of appeals that were granted after the digest was finalized. So that resulted in about a $260,000 decrease in revenue collected versus what we anticipated. So our, you know, final property tax haul essentially was about $300,000 less than anticipated. And that is becoming a trend for us. We saw it in the previous year and we anticipate that to happen again this year. If you go to the '24 preliminary digest now, you will see that they are proposing, or they are calculating this, this revenue projection based on the city retaining the same millage rate of 9.55. In fact, the city has submitted its advertisements to the champion and will be posting press release tomorrow, seven days ahead of the first property tax hearing, to propose just that, a 9.55 millage rate. Now, the board should know that municipalities can decide to lower the rate from that which is advertised, but it cannot increase the rate from that which is advertised without starting the advertisement process and hearing process all over again. So essentially, if like at hearing one, the board said that they proposed a potential increase, then we, we would, we would have to start that process over. So that's just a process matter that I wanted to take y'all through. But for the purposes of the digest discussion, what you, what you will notice is essentially a, a net increase in our digest of about $40 million. Now, there are two reasons for that increase. One is a 4.16% increase in value of existing properties. And then about another $13 million increase in new value. Now, it's hard to understand how that new value is shown on this digest versus the '23 digest because the county actually changed the way they're accounting for abatements from the '23 to the '24 digest. And the '23 digest, on the, on the calculation of the value in that far right column, the county places the full assessed value of the property and then includes the abatement left on that property in the property exemptions column to the left of it. So you will see last year, it appeared as if we had a higher commercial value with a greater rate of exemptions. So what they've done instead now is as those abatements burn off, they, they move the exemption from the exemption column now to the true value of the commercial property with the abatement already applied. I know that's really confusing, but needless to say, regardless of the way they account for it, there has been continued growth in the value of the commercial property. For example, last year, the gross value of residential to commercial property was about 78 to 22%, and now we're looking at, I mean, excuse me, 74 to 26%, or 76 to 24%. That's right. 76 residential, 24 commercial. Now it is, it is 77, 23, or 77 and a half and 22 and a half. I mean, in 23 and a half. I'm sorry.
Here you go.
I'm trying to go off the top of, that's it. Yeah, and I love that. You would think that, yes. But anyway, needless to say, the value of commercial property is growing at the rate that we expected. We are now in year five and year three of the, the two abatement schedules on the Willis and Jade respectively. We have, we did not have much additional new valued property come online in the '24 calendar year. We did have new properties come online in the '23 calendar year, which would include Olive and Pine and, and the Henley Townhomes. Of course, we do anticipate the '25 calendar year to be one of a lot of new value. So that, that's the picture that we have in front of us. We anticipate a collection of about 3.7 million in property tax. However, I want to put a condition on that. And that's the reason that we went through kind of going back and forth from the digest to various budgets. This is pre-appeal. And so we're, we're going to, we are anticipating a pretty heavy appeal cycle which will reduce the, the amount of property tax revenue that's projected here in the digest from that which is actually billed and collected. So I keep that in mind as we, we move forward through the property millage hearings, that the 3.7 is not necessarily the amount that we will end up with. Now, that all being said, based on our budget, this is in line with what we anticipated. We will have enough revenue generated to cover the cost of operations without any adjustment to the millage rate as is in the budget. If y'all recall, we do not have a scheduled transfer to the capital fund at year end with this, with this millage rate. So that's, that's the position that we're in and happy to answer any questions you might have, given the, kind of the multiple documents at play and the complexity of how the county has decided to present them to us.
Patrick, I think it bears repeating what the expected increase for existing properties is. I believe you said 4.6%?
4.16.
4.1.
So, so I think, you know, you and Commissioner Dela and the mayor are familiar with this process. Where in, in order to move forward with the millage adoption process, the city is required to produce advertisements that suggest an increase of taxes based on what they call the rollback rate. The rollback millage rate is the rate at which the assessments can be multiplied to determine a flat stream of revenue from year to year. So let's just say we collect 3 million last year and in order to collect 3 million this year, we would roll back the millage rate based on the increase in value of existing properties because of course you can't revalue a property that's never been valued in the first place. So there's always those two different sectors of growth, the revaluation of existing and then a new, new value that comes online. And so the increase in the existing property anticipated this year is 4.16%. So our millage rate would reflect that. And so you will see that in our, in our advertisements and as we move forward through the millage discussion.
Can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
Do you, do you recall what last year's was?
I do not know that answer off the top of my head. It was larger.
It was larger. So, okay, so inflation's.
Well, and of course, I think it, it bears mentioning that one of the reasons it was larger is because our millage rate was 9.8 last year. And now the reduction to 9.55 does minimize.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that rollback rate.
Thanks. Are you guys done with that?
It's good. Okay. So what does this mean?
So what this means is we are on target with all of our goals. We, you know, anticipate commercial growth to continue in, in the direction that it is, which will allow us to diversify our economic base, to create more sustainability as we move through. It allows us to keep the promise that, that the board made when making a determination to issue debt, which is that there would not be any need for a millage rate increase in order to cover that debt. In fact, the millage rate was decreased and we're still able to cover that debt. All of our existing capital program is budgeted for and all of those funding sources are in place to fund those projects. But as we discussed in our strategic planning session, in the future, there will be a need to address, you know, creating a more robust stream of revenue to our capital fund, especially given the fact that the city won't be able to rely upon some federal sources that were kind of unicorns, if you will, such as the CARES Act and ARPA, which, you know, we blessed us with, you know, about $1.7 million in tota, $1.6 to $1.7 million in totality that we completely did not expect, of course, because nobody anticipated the COVID pandemic. But that's, that's, that's kind of where our future is, but for now.
And I would add to that, Patrick, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if that referendum passes in November, that puts a 3% cap on increases. That will also affect our ability to.
That's right.
Continue to have.
Yeah, and, and I didn't address that for the purposes of this digest.
Yeah, it gets covered.
But, but you are correct that if the referendum is approved by the voters in November, cities would then be subjected to a digest whose existing value could only increase to a maximum of 3% every year. Of course, that does not include new value that would be added. And there is also a caveat within that law, should it become law, that municipalities actually can opt out of it and continue using the same millage adoption strategy that previously existed. But, you know, that remains to be seen, you know, which, which selection will, will ultimately be rendered by the board. I'm sure that, I mean, it largely depends on the referendum in November. However, we do expect that referendum to, to, or yeah, to be successful. So that's already something that we're planning for. We think the result of that would be if you opted into the 3% cap, that would probably require more millage volatility. And so the board would most likely have to adjust millage rates on, on a more frequent basis. Whereas, you know, if you, if you continue with the old method, the digest growth does most of the work for you. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to contemplate after, after the election cycle in November. But for now, our budget is in, is in good shape. The expected revenue from this digest is in line with our projections and we, we, we believe that the, you know, the plan that we laid out last December will, will hold.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Patrick. Not, not so much on the numbers, just a procedural thing. We have a deadline of July something to pass.
Yeah, so the, the county basically gives you a, a three-day grace period at the beginning of July to have your board set its millage and then disseminate that information to them. The process also requires three public hearings before a board can adopt a millage rate. And we've got those scheduled for the 20th, the 26th, and the 27th. So we will have adopted that rate in advance of the deadline.
Right. So what I was getting at is this, where you mentioned before that the advertised rate, we'd have to re-advertise and go through the entire process again if we wanted to raise. It might make sense for us next year to have that as an agenda item before we post it. Right now, it feels like we're handcuffed to.
Well, this was intentional, just based on conversations that we've had throughout the past year.
Sure, sure.
But yes, I agree with you and that is the plan for the following year, especially even more so because we'll have to react to the ballot referendum. So yes, I agree wholeheartedly and that's how we'll approach it moving forward.
Thank you. So you said this was a kind of a three-part discussion or three-phase?
Well, I was just taking you through the three different digests.
Oh, okay. Okay, so now like this is discussion one and next time will be discussion two.
Oh, no. This, basically what I, I was trying to show was the differential in preliminary to final digest and the impact that the millage rate has upon it. And given the fact that we changed the millage rate last year, it was a good opportunity to illustrate how that works.
Well, just FYI, I will not be here on the 20th. That's just the hearing, the first one, so you get to.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
I will not be here either.
Oh. That's fine.
You have three remaining.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
Graham will be here.
I could zoom in if necessary. We're just, it's late, so it's no big deal. But, um, that's just housekeeping. During the next year, though, I think, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, really, a lot of, I wouldn't say all bets are off until the November referendum, but that's going to be a big deal because, you know, we'll be faced with, okay, are we going to go with 3%? And then I can guarantee you raise the millage rate yearly. There's really no other way around it because the cost of things increases more than 3% most years. So it's kind of absurd to think that the cost of everything is not going to increase more than 3% a year. You know, which of course makes us all look bad, but anyway. If you got a budget and it's reasonable and you want to meet that budget and you're capped at 3%, then guess what? There are variables left as a millage rate. So. There are variables left as a millage rate. So, but we'll have to see what happens in November and have that discussion then. Should I mention, I mean, we kind of mentioned that we talked about in a strategic planning session having one mill of our budget, whether it's additional or existing or whatever, one mill of our budget dedicated to capital. It seemed like everybody was in agreement on that.
Or at least interested in pursuing, yeah.
But I, I think that, again, that's something we'll have to, I don't know, I feel like it's best to talk about after November, but would you be? Yep. So just kind of putting it out there for the sake of transparency and all that good stuff that, you know, we're going to have to have some serious discussions in December about how we're gonna, it's really almost strategy, how are we going to move forward in the future of meeting our budget? And um, it's not going to be great, but.
And, and Jonathan, if I could add to your.
I mean, it's, it's not that it will be bad, it's just that the numbers will change and it's just going to look bad. It's like the bill's not going to change, it's, you know, it's just the way we go about doing it, it what it does, it just makes cities look like they're constantly raising taxes because they can't meet their budget because three percent is just not enough. So it's, it's going to be fun.
And I just want to add to Jonathan's comment about three percent is not enough. That isn't coming from us. That's coming from Georgia Municipal Association and their estimate of what the average is over time. So just trying to be clear that it, you know, we know, we know that it will, it will not be, we will not be able to survive on three percent.
Historically, that's not, and there are exceptions, but historically it's still over more than three percent. So it's just, you know.
And uh, just another thought, it's particularly um, impactful to cities that are um, either landlocked, meaning they can't expand their boundaries, or built out. Avondale does have opportunity to create new value, but that opportunity is not limitless. And will, you know, decrease every year moving forward as our developments come online, the opportunity for future new development will diminish.
And GMA also said it's going to be hardest on cities without good um, commercial development.
Yes.
That the more you're, more residential you're uh, basing it on, the least good for you. Yeah.
Well, is it worth sharing what your experience in California was with this whole ridiculous concept? But anyway.
Yeah, well, California enacted a, a law um, in nineteen seventy-eight, I believe. That was very similar. And, and it really forced municipalities to generate different revenue streams uh, and increase the rate at which they collect taxes. Especially via sales tax, because they had to use sales tax to make up for the fact that property taxes were capped. So um, interestingly enough, it's kind of been uh, thought that capping property tax value, our property value increases on an annual basis is regressive government. And didn't really see uh, why uh, the state of Georgia would move forward with legislation like that, um, you know, forty-five years into the future, but it did, and you know, if it passes, we'll have to react to it accordingly. But that also, you know, doubles down the need to try and utilize every revenue stream that you can, like a, like a hotel tax, for example, is another stream that cities uh, collect significant amounts of revenue from. Of course, we don't have that opportunity without a hotel, but uh, that is the major opportunity uh, for diversifying our revenue streams. Given, especially given the fact that um, we can readily expand our boundaries and increase things like franchise fees. Uh, you've got cities with larger boundaries like Brookhaven and Dunwoody with lots of property that are able to generate tons of revenue from franchise fees because they have more customers for, you know, the cable companies and the light to provide service to. And we don't have that luxury. Uh, so um, you know, we, we're far more reliant on uh, property taxes for our revenue than larger, more diverse cities are. That's why it's even important, more important for us to ensure that our commercial development um, helps us sustain an economic helps us sustain economic success into the future.
All good points.
So we all good on the tax digest discussion for now?
Yeah.
We'll be. Graham, I'm sorry. I told Patrick to remind me because I'm terrible about doing it, so thank you. Yes, Graham, right. Uh, okay, I don't remember if I reviewed the defined benefit retirement plan.
Yeah, so there are several things that come across um, our, our desks every couple of years. You know, we, we, in fact, we changed our, our ordinance for uh, amending ordinances uh, because of these types of boilerplate standardized changes to existing plans and ordinances that the state mandates that we adopt. Uh, and this is one of them. So the IRS changes the tax code frequently, and due to tax code changes, of course, the, you know, our defined benefit plan through GMEBS has to be uh, changed. Now, the changes that the IRS has made to the tax code that necessitated the changes that you see before you don't have any impact uh, on our plan. Other than potentially, and this is not something that we've seen before, uh, but it really doesn't necessarily it wouldn't cause a great impact, but it, the, the only change that I could see impacting us is that it does require separated employees to draw their retirement benefit by age seventy-three. That is not something that we've encountered. Uh, we either have have experienced employees who didn't want to separate and worked past the age of sixty-five or who collect on the day they turn sixty-five, which is, you know, the, the financially most financially beneficial thing to do. Uh, it wouldn't be to sit on your benefit. But alas, the IRS has forced that change upon us. Now, I do want to say this. We're also in the process of working with GMEBS to assess the benefit available in our retirement program. Uh, our retirement program currently works like this. So uh, upon its most recent adoption in nineteen eighty-nine, employees uh, had a multiplier of one point two five percent times the amount of years of service they've put into the system multiplied by the average salary of their highest five years of compensation. Unless, and this adjusts every year based on IRS standard two, and right now it's, if there is an employee whose salary is greater than ninety thousand, that multiplier actually increases to two percent from one point two five percent, which is um, incredibly regressive too, because it rewards your higher income earners with a better retirement package than your lower income earners. Also, uh, the two point oh percent is pretty much the minimum industry standard of a defined benefit multiplier. We are far below that for persons earning less than ninety thousand dollars. We're at one point two five percent. And if you recall, uh, this, we, you know, discussion, we've had this discussion before which um, propelled us to changing our defined contribution retirement program offer. If you recall, guys, we um, increased the match component of our defined contribution plan, which is different from the defined benefit plan and, and for, for uh, Graham and Mike's sake, I'll explain it thusly. We have two separate retirement programs. One is mandatory. Uh, that's the defined benefit. So employees who are hired after January one, twenty thirteen are required to contribute four percent of their salary pre-tax into uh, the retirement program. The city is then also required to make a contribution as well, based on a ever-changing actuarial table that GMEBS provides us on an annual basis in order to meet our responsibility uh, for the benefit. And then when persons retire at sixty-five, they receive the benefit that, based on the calculation that I just mentioned. We have another program, which is a defined contribution. It's just, I guess, the phone ringing in that office. Yeah. So, so anyway, the way that works is the employee can make a contribution in any amount that it wants to, pre-tax. And will collect upon retirement based upon how well their investment did in the market, rather than giving a defined benefit at the end of the, at the end of the run. If you recall, the city decided to match employee contributions into that program, a hundred percent up to two hundred and fifty dollars per pay period or five hundred a month and six thousand a year, uh, which, again, is great and is available to every single employee that we have here. But, you know, again, it's easier for a high earner to participate in that program because that is a, a smaller percentage of their necessary spending. So with that in mind, uh, I have asked GMEBS to run some analyses on changing the formula, uh, doing a, a, a a flat, both, both scenarios will be a flat formula. There won't be a, a tiered formula like we currently have. So we're, we're running it at, uh, we're running it at two and two point five. Two point five is, is pretty much uh, kind of a, an, 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 an industry standard. GMEBS has seen municipalities who are adopting new plans consistently use the two point five percent multiplier. I do not know what type of impact that will have on us financially at this time. Especially um, given the fact that there haven't been many persons retire from the city to date. Uh, however, we have a, a, you know, a greater number of eligible persons to retire in the future. Uh, so um, as we get those results back from GMEBS, I will share that with you. We can make a determination as to what our plan will look like in the future. So that's something that's coming, but in the meantime, we're still required to adopt these amendments per IRS regulation, and therefore that's why we're bringing it to you.
Well, that was simple. Alright. That's very necessary. Okay, so well, first of all, questions? This is something we will vote on in two weeks. Okay, so we will vote on this next meeting. Which is on the, yeah, uh, next meeting is.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Graham, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, well, alright, so that's all for that.
That's it.
Okay. Last item of discussion, twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
Yes. Uh, so, uh, you know, we have employed a strategy in recent years of amending the budget in year and amending the budget in year after the preliminary audit work, and our books are closed and our numbers have been uh, resolved, so to speak. If you will notice, uh, we, we are pretty close to the amended budget we did in the year last year. Uh, our revenues were a little lower than anticipated, given the amount of uh, appeals granted by the Board of Equalization at the county. The reduction in property tax collection uh, of three hundred and twenty-one thousand also includes the fact that the county did not distribute uh, the utility tax collection in twenty-three. We anticipate two distributions in twenty-four. So the sixty thousand that we had to reduce in collections in twenty-three were actually probably increased uh, by sixty thousand or so in twenty-four. We also um, did have areas where revenue generation was more than anticipated, especially in uh, licenses and permits. That's a good thing. That just means there's a, a lot of uh, uh, construction going on in the city. Those adjustments actually have to be made to both sides of the ledger, so the increase in revenue is also pretty much offset by an increase in expenditures, because how that works is a percentage of the, the money collected for the issuance of permits goes back to the contractor for the purposes of plan review and inspection. So you'll see also on the expense side, um, and it does explain to you in that memo that you know, the increase in construction activity reflected higher revenues and higher expenditures. We also, if y'all recall, had a, a unique situation happen in twenty twenty-three by whereby we uh, contracted for two audits. The twenty-two audit and the twenty-three audit, because the work performed on the twenty-two audit. Can't, uh, excuse me, the twenty-one audit and the twenty-two audit, because the work for the twenty-one audit was actually uh, completed in the twenty-three calendar year. Of course, we discussed that on multiple occasions, uh, so we had to essentially double up a uh, 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 an expense there. Um, everything else is, is pretty self-explanatory. Um, we, we still ran in the black. Even uh, with the reduced millage rate, uh, we did not, we are not predicting or having to plan for any millage increase to cover existing operational expenses. Uh, as we talked about earlier, we are going to need to address a stream of revenue to our capital fund in the future, but for right now, uh, all revenues are projected to cover operational expenses and then some.
Okay. Alright, so, yeah, I just, a, a couple of questions, Patrick. So really the impact of the the appeals uh, and the public utility taxes was about ten percent of what we expected.
Now, the public utility, that was a complete anomaly, and, and it it doesn't disrupt our cash flow at all, so collecting it twice in this calendar year, uh, will essentially wash out that impact.
That was my question, is that, does that happen uh, often? The second uh, was on fines and forfeitures went down again by about fifteen percent. So, uh, is, I guess people are following the law then.
Well, it's, it's a combination of multiple things. One, you know, the initial reduction in the amount of revenue you know, coming from the fines and forfeiture source was, was because of a, a movement away from a former policing strategy, whi- which essentially created a, a speed trap, right? So we know that. And then, in addition to that, um, you know, uh, Chief S had instituted a, you know, more of a community policing strategy whereby officers were issuing formal warnings than traffic citations. So the, the, the end result has been a further reduction in the corrections from fines and forfeitures. You know, we'll have to fine tune that on an annual basis. I mean, some, i- it'll add and flow. Uh, we anticipate it in future years going up more just because of the fact that we've got uh, numerous new housing communities that are being built around us. Of course, we'll have uh, an additional housing uh, community on the Avala property. So uh, you know, as vehicle traffic ebbs and flows, so will that number.
Right.
Yeah.
One final question, the ban loan expense was fifty thousand more. Why was that?
Yeah, so if y'all recall, for a four-year period, we just paid an interest-only payment on the money that we drew down on the band note. And for the first three years of that, the life of that interest-only payment, it actually saved more money than projected because the interest rate was so low. In fact, in 2020 and 2021, we were basically paying nothing, which was great. However, last year, interest rates climbed and settled our expense, our interest-only expense. However, now, in the '24 year, we're fixed because we issued the bonds. We know what our interest rate is. We have our amortization schedule, and we know what that payment's going to be. So we won't have any more volatility in that number.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Questions on that? With, I don't even know why I'm asking. If we have this 3% cap, do you know, will people still be able to appeal that?
I do not know the answer to that. I can find out.
I'm guessing, yes.
Yes, they will be, but the success of the appeal, the likelihood of the success of the appeal will be much lower.
Yeah, and there is going to be changes to freeze factors as well.
Going away.
Yeah. So, yeah, the whole, the whole kind of process is going to change drastically. And, you know, much like the ebb and flow of fines and forfeitures, I'm sure it'll, it'll take us a little while to understand what the impact of that law will be.
Yeah, that, good God. That's gonna be a pain. All right. So Graham, you have any questions on this room?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else appear? All good? Okay, well, that concludes our work session discussion topic stuff. I'm number seven, public comment. Kathy, then Jen.
Well, when I, I'm happy to refer Kate one seven to Stratford. What I want to talk about falls right into your fines and stuff. And welcome back, Chief S. I hope you're feeling better. I have noticed that we are not, a lot of our residents, visitors are not following the rules of common courtesy traffic. And Patrick, I think everyone knows what I'm talking about. We're speeding. We're not stopping at stop signs. We are going the wrong way on one-way streets. We're parking where yellow curbs are. What else? So we've tried everything, and I believe, I believe in community policing, but it's not working. We need to start issuing some citations again for these blatant, especially the ones where, Lucy, you live across the street. I drove down the street today in front of the golf carts on the corner there. There were two cars parked on the yellow line. How hard is it for us? I don't think we'll have to issue a lot. Issue three or four citations. Joe's going to talk to Sam. Sam's going to talk to Billy, and they're all going to figure out they're going to take it for doing this. And they shouldn't do it. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is the golf cart violations that I'm seeing. And I know y'all have talked about this, and we've put it in, ticket these people. I don't know. I saw six little girls hanging out of a two-car golf cart the other day. I mean, it scares me. They're leaving in and out. They're going around the traffic circle the wrong way. You know, and I know I've talked to enough police officers, just sort of casually, to say that they have called their parents, but we need to issue big buck tickets for this, and maybe that, in my opinion. Maybe they'll figure it out. Yeah, somebody's going to get hurt eventually. And the other thing I want to mention real quick is the pickleball courts. Can we, or have y'all ever discussed reviewing the rules of use for those courts? I've noticed a huge increase of the number of players that we have. I've noticed a huge increase of the number of out-of-decade county license plates that obviously those people are coming to. So maybe we need to be like other counties and other municipalities and start charging a fee or something. But if my kid wanted to go play tennis when my kids were little, which they did all the time, they couldn't do it now. Those are my two comments, and thank you.
Thank you. We may need to put that on the agenda. Okay. Jen, sorry. Yes.
Well, I, just a point of information. The last thing I read in the AJC about the 3% was that they were going to revise it to be you couldn't go above the rate of inflation. Am I wrong about that?
I don't know.
That was, that was my statement, that it felt a little bit better. If that were the case, as opposed to this, that's what I read in the AJC. I may be wrong.
I'm not sure. I'll check, actually, but thank you. Okay. All right, seen none. No other comment. I'd like to bring it back. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All things are.